It'd be nice if that TV had a clock on. Had a clock and you know, you're going to pick the clock in the mirror.
Give me the bell.
Okay, what do I do? Just pitch around a circle.
Got it.
Oh, you could have done it outside. But this will be three times outside.
Respectable.
It's good.
Mm-hmm. We can be respectful of them.
That's true.
One minute to go.
We'll actually get the wrong thing.
I'm looking to die. I'll just. Patrick, just going to change it. I don't know. Just give me a minute.
He came in when I came in.
Right now?
Okay. We'll start. Maybe they'll tell me your wins. Baby Chad?
Evening.
Is okay?
I've lost it.
Okay, it is. All right, me.
Can you see me? I kind of lost you.
Uh, we can see you good.
I can't see you guys anymore. Anyways, you can hear me. I can.
You do a quick check maybe or? It it's showing both up here. Uh, we're seeing ourselves in the screen on chat and then you on it, so I'm not sure.
I can still see you.
You can see him? Okay. Okay, it's 7:00 P. M. Uh, trying to call the middle of the. Counsel session to order Thursday, May 11th, 2023, 7:00 P. M. It's a hybrid session. Want to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. Before we begin our meeting, I'd like to acknowledge that Stewiak is a Nk'moti, the ancestral and oncedent territory of the Nk'moti people. Attendance, we have a full slate of counselors and Counselor Ramses joined by Zoom. Good evening, Counselor. Looking for a change, approval or change to the agenda? And I have one, if any, Counselor, to do the same.
And number seven presentation, Patrick Hartley, SPL Human Capital.
With that, uh, change anymore?
You said you had one?
No, that's the same one.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So let that need a motion to their regards, please.
I'm with that motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Will Counselor Osborne, a second of your case. Second by Counselor Lutz, discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question has been called on favor. Posed, revoked. Looking for disclosure of interest on agenda items. Very nice. We have no approval of minutes, but it was combined last session. We have no announcements or confirmations. See before me. So with that, we'll move into presentations and I'm pleased to join Patrick Hartley of SPL Human Capital Resources. And Patrick is our resource recruiter for our go forward with a new CEO. So with that, I will turn meeting off key, sir.
Now, I'm just calibrating how I'm going to stand and see everybody correctly. Can I slide over there and use the vacant seat, do you think?
Or up here, if you want, up here, wherever you want to be, Patrick.
Actually, I think I'm there. Give you the sight line. Let's try that and see how it goes.
So we're looking at a 30-minute dialogue, give or take. I'll do a little.
Hi, everybody. Counselor. All the counselors who are here and my name is Pat Hartley. I'll explain that long name, Human Capital. I believe that humans and organizations are capital, plus it's and therefore I named my organization as such, Human Capital. But the operation that I usually use is SPL Development Services Inc. too. So Human Capital is a formal, official name. Now, with that explanation, you've already had, and I think, a copy of the proposal to take a peek at. And I'm willing to ask you any questions that you might have on that. But I'll just summarize briefly that we've got, we've laid out an aggressive eight-week to 10-week recruitment process. A couple of weeks of preparation and presentations like this. A couple of weeks of actually making sure that we've got all the documents that we need communicated and we're gathering candidates. A couple of weeks of for interviewing and dealing with those candidates. It's this process that I've used a number of times. And one of the benefits of the standard process is that we get to know it fairly well. But one of the things that I always try to do is make sure that I adapt it to the organization. This time I've added something that I don't always do, which is a SWOT analysis. I'm sorry, I'm laying back a little bit. I'm not trying to catch you.
No.
But I've got a SWOT analysis, but I'd like to do that with you tonight. Um, and I'll explain why. I usually use some sort of an interview or a questionnaire process. And I've included it in the proposal. You would have seen it in the first proposal. And the questionnaire is an opportunity for me to grill either staff or council mercilessly of what they think the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats are collectively for the organization. And the reason that I do that is because we're trying to attract a candidate who has the best fit. We have candidates who might apply for a job that involves technical things, working in a room without a lot of people input. Then we might have candidates who would like to work with a lot of people, but not necessarily do anything technical. There's other variations of that, but the main point is that we have to understand what the job is that we're looking for and what success is going to look like. What are we looking for in the job? What are we looking for them to achieve? So that as they SWOT, is an opportunity to look at what are the current strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats there for the organization? You with me so far? Any questions, thoughts? Okay, so I've not mystified you yet. Uh, you're on the edge of your seats waiting for something useful to happen. Well, here it is. We're going to go to the SWOT. What I've already done is I've had an opportunity to talk with, um, Dale, and that's an excellent interview process. And that opportunity gave me ideas of what he thought of the situation that he was leading. And I had a unique opportunity because I, that's Dale, uh, some time ago. And the unique opportunity is that you revisit somebody who's worked in a particular role for a time. You get a different perspective on who they are and what they bring to the table. So I've had that opportunity. I've also had an opportunity today to have a SWOT, a SWOT with staff. And that opportunity came about as a result of some scheduling, which I appreciate. And it was around, it's short notice. It was around three today and took us, uh, moving hours. So, um, we had, in this room, we had a good opportunity to get staff's perspective. Now, what I want is to ask you what your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats are for the organization. And we're not looking at the community per se, but we're looking at how this town is organizing, contributing to the community. What are the things that are making it strong? What are the things that are areas where we could improve? What are the opportunities to improve those things that we want to improve? And finally, what are threats? Are there any threats that we see on the horizon? Anything that's worrying us? So with that, I would vote to call for my first open. Some people use flip charts. I don't hide particular notes. I've got a reasonably good memory. Fairly good. And I'm going to send you back a copy of my notes, so you'll be able to figure out whether or not I've got a fairly good memory or not. So with that, we're going. Just strengths. Does that sound okay? Yes. What are the strengths of the town of Stewiak? As it serves the community? I'm going to call for the first strength. This is like a game show, the clock is ticking. Any sense of strengths? I see some driving through the community. There's obvious growth, so to me, that would be a strength. But what, what do you folks think?
I find that there is a sense of community, like people like being in Stewiak.
Yes. Sense of community in place.
And pride of living here. Would be good.
That's a good one. Now, I'm going to be bending over and making notes. That's so I don't mess up on my, unfortunately, because then I'm going to be able to say, he didn't catch this and catch that. But honestly, if you do get it, then you want to make additions to it. What other strengths? That's a good one. The pride of place. This is an opportunity for your input, so I don't think there's any bad answers here. There's just different perspectives. And the HR committee is going to have an opportunity, the selection committee said has an opportunity to pull this together with me. But we wanted an opportunity for counselors to, to give their views. So we can do strengths or we can go to opportunities. Anybody? Any bids on opportunities?
Growth and potential for growth.
Yeah. And growth is in residences or in commercial, both? I think there's a pretty nifty chart somewhere in the textbook, the assessments. Anybody else? Is this panelists or is it?
Location.
Location is okay. That's probably the strength, but it's probably an opportunity to, and you find that there's a symmetry between these. Anybody else? One of the things that I like when I look at organizations, sometimes the organization says, um, we have a culture of, I don't know, training, or we have a culture of inclusion, or we have a culture of, um, careful decision-making and thought before we make decisions. Or we have a culture where things are a little bit slow in terms of making decisions. So any thoughts on that?
I think some decisions are slow and some happen before another could have happened.
So you're neutral on the decision-making process, which is an opportunity.
Can you be neutral for decision-making?
Yeah, yeah, actually, you can say.
I would say it depends on the, depends on the project.
Yeah.
Where it comes on the.
Yeah, it's contextual. It depends on whether or not the right elements are in place and when getting to that. Yep.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure. Sorry.
Is this different than from what the survey sent us?
No.
And what we're supposed to send back to you?
Yes, the survey is additional information. I should have explained that. Um, so good question. The survey is intended to look at the priority, sort of priorities. You're assessing the priorities of the individual. You know, the priorities of the individual, the competencies, the behaviors, the ways in which that individual will work. What we're looking at, though, also with this SWOT is an overall or an overarching sense of performance. How is, how will the individual work within the community to make results happen? What are the strengths? What are the weaknesses going into that? Complimentary, so it's complimentary. I don't always do that, but it seems to me that where there's, there's been a lot of growth and change. It seemed to me that it would be wise to actually introduce that. So I've added that into the process. So I'm still looking for survey feedback. And there's still an opportunity to get your surveys in. But in addition to that, I thought the live discussion might be useful. Yeah, I was just thinking that in my own mind. I don't know. Anyway, on opportunities, on weaknesses.
Another one for strengths or opportunities is the, um, the amount of stuff available for recreation. For a small amount, for a small town, we have a great. There's a lot of programming available.
Which contributes probably to the community product.
Yes, well, they're all wrapped up in.
They are.
All opportunities and all that stuff. It's all part of the community.
Yeah. I know somebody who moved here a while ago and I think it was in the hundreds before she really struck the lice on the positive aspects of the community here. And she's big on recreation, so she's two for, she's two for life. Anybody else with anything?
Okay, our, um, financial situation?
Yep.
Is good. And we've been able to reduce our taxes a couple of times. I have reserves ready for some of our infrastructure work. Like to think that's good management of council and staff.
Yep. Does the community know that? I guess that's everybody, not just. Does the community understand financial position?
I think some do and don't.
Some do, some don't. That's fair. Is it because the message is not getting up there? Is it because people don't want to hear or is it because of some other reason? Hard to say, I suppose, probably Gary.
I can't speak for other people, that's for sure. Maybe a lack of clarity on what is what the budget means. I, I'm not sure. Again, I can't speak for other people.
I think it's a matter of opinions too for residents.
So.
I said, I think it's a matter of opinions too for residents.
Yeah, yeah. Does the past play into this? Do people have opinions that carry out along? Sometimes it hasn't changed. Is there?
I would say so.
So that could be an opportunity for, opportunity to have a communicator who could get that message up there.
I think communication is a, um, point for growth.
Okay. So. All right, so anything on the threat side of things that you're worried about, keep shut like that?
Yeah. Well, why am I the only one talking? I'm usually the quiet one.
I feel like I'm hovering, so what am I going to do? I'm just going to wear down for a second.
It's like, it's all me now. Um, I, I do feel that. And I know there's again, the difference between you, something I'm worried about is the.
Excuse me. Sorry. Yes, but Chad's gone.
It is.
Sorry.
Sub sixty.
Sorry.
It, so, yeah, okay. So the growth and whether it's sustainable growth.
Sustainability. What I think is sustainability, I think not only sustainability, is that growth going to continue? But have we taken the measures to naturally fulfill our mandates and goals with sustainability? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes, make sure that the, that we have the, you know, the amount of water and sewage in place that we need. We have infrastructure and, and access to in and out of town if there's an emergency. You know, those things. And also is the growth, um, it, does the growth meet the vision of what Stewiak is? And what is our vision? And what, you know, what do we want it to look like in 10 years, 20 years?
The disconnect could exist, could be a threat and lack of clear objectives.
I do look at stuff.
I'm going to roll over here.
Yeah, yeah.
Just sit in front of her, you guys. Good job.
Um, it's good. Um, in, in a sense, I guess, maybe sustainability has got two features then. One, that we made the moves that we need to make to sustain our past growth. And two, is it sustainable in terms of pace and future growth, safe or past and future?
Yeah.
Cool.
And the vision.
And maybe what's your mandate of your residents in the town as compared to the mandate of the province? Because of push of population and whatever, interesting, the heavy armed push at times. And all municipalities are basically the same way.
Yeah. Does that play out especially here or does that, for everybody? Does that play out especially in Stewiak or is that something that is pretty typical in Saskatchewan today?
My part, the broadcast is, is good at this, like conferences or rollos have that vision of dumbing the population. Like 2050, uh, Counselor Osborne, now to a, to a conference that talked about the fact that every municipality is based on the same thing, the worst money going to come from infrastructure, provincial, federal. So again, what control do you have on the small town, large town, city?
And how you make the vision align with that, the big vision aligned with that sort of practical vision. Am I feeling a more in agreement with you when I'm sitting down or does it matter? All right. Um, what about upon the services side of things? What about any services that you like to look at and say, are there any opportunities? Are there any areas of strength and areas of weakness?
Uh, an area for growth would be transportation.
Okay. When you.
I wouldn't call it the areas of weakness. I would call them areas.
Okay, so we've got to stick with opportunity for that. All right, I get you. Now, tell me, when you say, when we say transportation, do you mean public transport? Do you mean roads? What other groups?
Yes, all, um, the transportation in and out of town, like the, the intersection there at the number two highway.
Yep.
It gets pretty congested, so as we grow the town, that's going to get even worse.
Yeah.
Um, and right now it's just a stop sign and I don't know if there's any accidents there, but I keep hoping I never get into one. Um, public transportation, I don't know if we even have a taxi service at this point. Um, which, you know, leads to also like an equity issue because people can't access food land is easy or just sidewalks and stuff, like for active transportation. It, we don't have a great bike lanes and, um, level sidewalks. The brakes no removal though. Excellent. Absolutely.
I don't know if there's anybody in this room that would be interested.
Can't see anybody present.
You guys, counselors, get, the council that I've worked with before get complaints from residents and so on. Um, complaints that come in are sometimes about things like snow when it's there's five, five complaints and 50 positives. A ratio of that. Do you have a sense of what public satisfaction is? Is that any area that you can comment on?
I would say it's very poor at the moment.
Okay.
And I, I say that because I just went through a by-election, so I was at every doorstep.
Okay.
Um, and I don't know if it's a spillover from COVID, I, I, but people are very negative right now. Um, but as far as complaints, yeah, we get them. I mean, we're not any different than any other municipality.
I find the complaints have really dropped though since we started advertising, um, the order in which the streets get cleared out. So people know when their streets are going to get cleared out and once they have the information, it's okay, we're going to wait for, you know.
Yeah, I guess I wasn't talking about snow removal, sorry.
Oh, well, that's, that's what we were talking about. Sorry, I.
I entered it as abroad. Snow removal was on the table time that I, I entered it, but so that's correct. But at the same time, your comment, I think, panelists more about general.
Yeah.
Services.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And I have to be honest, I, I see it from a different perspective. I don't get that. I see it more of as a betterment, go forward, problem solving.
Oh, yeah.
And there's going to be pockets out, but overall, just my opinion, pretty much positive.
You don't get any complaint?
Very little. If I do refer to the right place.
So in terms of data, do you have data about the complaint process? Is there a complaint protocol? Is there a way in which you can track down that motion of complaints? Is there some way that you could assess it?
Are you looking, sorry, I, I, as, I went through this as staff, so I'm just kind of.
Yeah, I was generally looking and directed about retiring you to this spot. Yeah, okay.
I think we all kind of do different things, maybe.
Yeah.
I try to reach out. I don't get very many, honestly. I've only had one about snow in eleven years.
It should be, it should be a metal.
But I, I do try to reach out. I would reach out to maybe the staff person and the C A O.
Yeah.
Generally.
I would do the same, but I mean, I had a complaint, uh, an issue two weeks ago and I ordered the complaint to the C A O. Because I, I couldn't fix it myself. I knew the C A O was looking into it anyways.
So maybe, like you said, Susan, the idea of having a complaint protocol, we get that, that issue of people getting, either receiving complaints differently or getting them differently. Be good to have some data on that, maybe? A good process to deal with it?
And maybe a tidy up of that process.
Yeah.
It's about the social base.
Yeah. Or all of her. And this is where the survey sort of interacts, because in the survey, I've got a question that is about, um, competencies and it's around the, it's around the issue of evidence-based. So the more that you can have evidence-based, in, in my view, I, I put that on there so you could select that if you think that that's an important thing for the new C A O to do, to be evidence-based. So that's a pitch on the connection to your question. Uh, I wanted to ask you whether you thought that the list of opportunities was longer than the list of strengths? When you think of the organization and how it has worked over the last couple of years, uh, would you say it's primarily tipped towards strength or opportunities? Any sense of that? So that's right.
I'm reflecting.
Yeah.
We always thought that Stewiak was going to grow.
Yep.
And for as long as I've been in this role, you know, it's like it's going to grow. The landslide's coming this way, it's going to happen. And then all of a sudden it happened.
Yeah.
And so while we had a lot of the, I'll say, the assets in place, the, the strengths in place, we, we couldn't act on it because it wasn't happening. And now it's here. So it, it's kind of both, like we're able to receive it, but like it's a lot for council to try and process and staff to try and process. And, um, it, it's huge. And, you know, I'm hoping that we're on the right track to handling it all, but it, it's a lot. And I, I think it's both. And even though, like you couldn't, you couldn't do things until the growth happened, but hopefully we're, like you want to be proactive, but you also have to be kind of reactive, if that makes any sense.
I, I also think this is something about implementation and I'm, I'm going to be working with somebody around the need to move from strategy sometimes down to the details of implementation. And what I was thinking of when I was thinking of that question, strengths or opportunities, was, was that a point? That maybe the strength of growth is a good one, but then there's opportunities that you need to take to follow up on that growth that maybe haven't captured, been captured yet. So this, in some organizations, municipalities, in my experience, are particularly nice. We're great at, um, saying that the strategic opportunity, we're pushing forward strategically, but then if there's execution that's needed, we don't always get to that. We, we're so busy with the next strategy or the next idea that we don't get down to the details of implementation following up. Does that make sense? Um, it, it's one of those things that, as you said, you can't really predict and sorry, because you've got to wait to some extent for it to happen, but then how do you deal with it when it happens? I wondered if anybody has any, just around the room and ask if you've got any general comments that don't fit in that strengths, weakness or opportunity framework that you wanted to make regarding selecting, let me see. You can respond to this on your questionnaire. You can respond to that. But if there's something that you do want to say. But if there's something that you do want to say, I'd be happy to hear it at this stage. So.
I would like a town to have a more Jedi mindset. Justice, equity, diversity, diversity and inclusion.
Yep. Now, what would that look like in terms of the first few steps?
Well, equity in hiring would be a good. Dark.
Yes. So a position, policy position or two that reflects your sort of best practices.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So mindset plus some practical. Roseanne?
I think right now, no. When I filled out the survey, I think I.
Yes, you did.
Might have indicated a few things there.
Pretty much the same. As soon as you walk in the stairs, you'll have 15 more answers. I, I think the same idea as Roseanne, try to capture what was lost for that time.
Yeah.
And I think as we move forward, we're all going to come around the table and have a whole opportunity to revisit.
Questionnaire, questionnaire.
There's some mechanism.
Um, I, um, some, some jobs. Is, um, sometimes to me, it's some, it's sometimes more the things you can't quantify. The, you might not know much about snow, but you might know how to lead the town forward. Be able to create a team and keep your team going and keep it moving forward. That kind of thing, that's kind of where my thought goes. If you can learn how to plant snow. We're picking on Jeff and plant snow. But, um.
You can't probably teach me.
But there's an inherent, I'll say trait to be able to, to get people to work together and be positive and move forward.
I think that's true. And honestly, I've tried driving some of the big rigs and they're very difficult. I've worked with transportation public works as a leader for a while. And those are, those are big, big jobs.
Absolutely. I know, I'm not trying to minimize it at all.
We've got feather dusters.
They're not feather dusters.
You remember that commercial? But the, so the soft skills, behavioral skills, to build teams and make people feel confident and safe, things of excellence. Okay. Now, I don't remember your first name. I saw you, I think you were on the, you were on council last time I was here. You've got a great brain, but it's short as.
Rebecca.
Rebecca, okay. I'll forget it probably again, I forget my own name sometimes.
I have nothing yet. I have the survey.
Okay, you've got the survey.
Survey.
Yep.
So there's more detail in that.
Sure, yeah, there is. Any questions about the survey or about the process or any general statements about what you hope for from the process?
No, I think it, at least the majority of it, there's an other section for.
Yeah. Okay, look forward to your comments on the survey. And within the gentleman, his chair, I'll get behind you. Take your sign over there so you're. Comfortable chair.
Can you hear me or?
Yeah, please.
Oh, I, I, I don't, I'm sorry, I had to excuse myself for a few minutes there. Uh, I, I don't know exactly what the question was, but I, I believe over the next five or 10 years, the town is growing at a rate that is, you know, unprecedented. But, you know, I, I, I don't know when it comes to hiring a new C A O. I, I really think starting somebody, you know, that's green, that's green, that's never done this, the job before. I, I, I think that would be a mistake for us right now. I, I think the C A O and the, should be a town planner and a C A O. I don't think you should be the same job. And.
There should be two roles, so there are roles.
I, 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 I believe so. I think it's too much, too much for one person to do, to do by myself. But anyways, that's, that's just my thoughts.
Okay. And on the, sorry, what's your, what's your first name?
Chad.
Chad, I think you were here too. And it proves that I've got a uniformly bad memory before. But it seems to me that what you're saying with that is that, is it too much work or is it two different skill sets?
I believe it's both.
Okay. Would you say that in terms of the structure? We're not going to be touching the structure in this exercise. We're going to be hiring, you know, the plan that I've laid out, the plan that I was talking about before is one role. So I'm not saying we aren't going to be touching it. But what the plan that we have is to do one thing. So you're saying that we should concentrate on the C A O bit as opposed to.
Yeah, and it, it's just the, the C A O, you look at the growth in Trow and the, the staff that the town of Trow would have. I think that they're, they're planning staff and there's probably as much as what, what we have for entire staff. And, and so, you know, to expect the C A O to take the amount of growth that we're having. How do, how do you do both? How do you, how do you keep up with it all? It's, 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 you know, I, I understand why Dale was overwhelmed with it. You know, I, I don't think he did a, a, he tried hard at it, that's for sure. It's a, it's a, a lot, a lot of work.
I'm taking it that you, you feel that we should concentrate on getting a good C A O and getting that job organized. And then at some point, look at other structural issues that there may be with the C A O problem.
Yeah, I, I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, fair. And I haven't given you a chance. I know you're going to submit your questionnaire.
Questionnaire.
Yeah, is there anything verbally that you wanted to say? You think we're good? All right. Pink hair, meant that like time is up. Here, here's the thing that I want to say to you. The town, to me, has shown a lot of resilience in terms of the town over the years. Because there are some places in Minnesota where the sense of community that you have is not diminished. So I think that's a real strength, that strength, that sense of community. I think there's things to build on, basically. And I'm not just saying this because I'm here, but it's because I have to form an advertisement. That, and the advertisement is drawn to be to attract people. So what, I will take these notes and present them back to you. But in terms of the strength and the pride, there's things to build on here. So whenever I take on a job of this sort, I look for what I can build on. And also, I like to look for things that we can improve. So when you fill out the questionnaire and when you send it in, I'll be looking for things that we can work on together. And then we'll try to come up with a position that takes it forward. And I do look forward to communicating back to you with what you said. And then you can tell me how well I heard it. And I look forward to your survey results. And I do look forward to working this through. Within my little wrap-up time, that's all I have to say unless you've got any questions, prepared shots for me or questions or whatever. I think it works better when I steal Chad's chair, so.
Thank you, Chad. Not too well, thank, thank you, Patrick. It's been a night and the process so far has been fantastic. I'm looking forward to working with you on this team together.
Likewise, I answer all emails. And it may not make sense depending on how you look at them. But still, I'll give a good answer to any email that anybody sends me. So I look forward to your, to the survey and thanks for the time today. There's cookies here, you passed around. Oh, you're giving the cookies after I present?
You'll slide them to the back door.
That's all I was talking about, I had cookies.
Yeah, yeah, you wanted the sugar. Bring cookies. Rector, I shouldn't tell us, but Rector, I think said he always gave the annual general meeting chowder. Because, milk chowder, because milk makes people relax. Anyway. I, it's like the cookie thing, I couldn't resist saying.
Did you see him come to council with chowder? It was his special recipe, so I'll have to find out if he'll share his recipe. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
No presentations on the agenda. Number eight, written positions in correspondence. So we're going to move into, into business. A staff reports, administration.
So just the first point that I'd like to discuss is the R F P that we opened, the, the tender that, documents that we opened on made for, for Riverside Lewis Pleasant Hill. Uh, but there's actually a couple spots we're talking about it tonight. We're talking about it further on in business, the R F P and also in my financial report. So I'll just quickly summarize it here and we can get into further discussion, I think. Like I said, either in the financial or the business end of it when we make the motion. But, um, yeah, we had only one submission for tender and it is significantly over our budget. So there's some serious conversation that needs to happen with that one. Well, source study, we're, I don't know, just at the beginning stages of phase four, which is, uh, includes the preparation and submission of groundwater withdrawal application and the pre-design for the infrastructure. When I spoke to one of the engineers on Monday, they anticipate end of September. So that will help us with our line negotiations. Then at least at, at that point, we'll know what kind of acreage we're talking about that will require. Have a little bit more information for us to make those, those deals. So that's the two big things that we've kind of been working on for the last two weeks since I started this. Any questions?
I have a few and you may not be able to answer them. But, um, one's kind of timely actually because from the presentation, it was about a complaint process if we have one. And if, if a resident can find out who made a complaint against them after a formal complaint is filed. I've had a resident ask me in worst times if they're able to find out. I know there's been communications with Dale, but I don't, I, I honestly don't know how much information has been passed on. So I, for the chair, I certainly understand if the S D C A O doesn't, doesn't have the information.
Information? Yeah, certainly I can bring it back or email you afterwards, whichever. So you want to know if after a formal complaint is filed, if the complaint can be identified?
Or, yeah, complaint can be identified. And then the others, I have three small things. One's the broken problem on Highland, if we have an update on that.
I do not have an update on that. I can look for one.
Um, and do you know if we're having a, we speak called the large garbage cleanup.
Okay. I think this is the last year of the contract that we have with Miller. And there is going to be the spring and fall cleanup. But going forward, while we still were in the midst of getting a new contract. But I think that we had tentatively decided at council before that we weren't going to do that. Because they do pick up one large item with the garbage every time or two.
Two, every two weeks. So is there a spring cleanup because on the waste site?
Well, there should be because.
Oh, I saw it. For some reason I saw one that's the week of May. I guess a great question to ask, the week of, week starting May 14th, though. But I don't know where I saw that now that you mentioned I saw it.
So I looked on the, because my sister asked me actually, and I looked on the Winchester Waste, you know, my app, and I didn't see anything.
No, I didn't either.
We used to have it.
Well, if, we're still in the current contract from five years ago, so it should be happening. Maybe with just, they don't have it on their site. Because they don't offer it, Winchester and Trow don't offer it, which is why they kind of asked us to push the big pickups out of the garbage. But I can see spring and we might as well look into fall at the same time. I didn't expect a big discussion. Get a hat just for the road.
I can. Um, and then the last, again, I'm not sure if you have an update on this either. It's Crime Stoppers signage.
Nope.
My understanding that there was some signs dropped off to C A O vocal. And Crime Stoppers reached out to me and they're wondering, one, if we're, had an opportunity to put the signage up. And two, there were suggestions of maybe around the subway area.
I was thinking.
Yeah. Subway and I saw a seat.
Okay, so I don't know if I asked for suggestions from council for where they should go or if I would reach out to public works kind of thing?
Those were suggestions from Crime Stoppers.
Any other questions?
Actually, I just, you also had a question about the complaint process. So that did come up also with our staff discussion earlier with Patrick Hartling. And I think we've discussed it in just a kind of a high level about that we want the complaints to come to one area, one person. And they will disperse them to the logical area. If it's public works or if it's a C A O, if it needs to be escalated. C A O is kind of what, and this is just preliminary, is what we think is the escalation point. Because we can solve the problem more than likely before it gets there.
So that's for council to send it to a staff person? Because I've been sending you a lot to the C A O.
Let us, like I said, it was preliminary, we just had the discussion. It's a great idea, so we'll keep you updated on that, but we, we want to work on that too.
We'll bring it back to next session.
Maybe.
We'll talk more, there's some reason.
Okay, we'll try it. And it's preliminary, early, early, super early stages, one hour old.
And you'll get back to on the data.
Yes.
Okay.
No, I just scrolled to the end of June here, first to the lobby, I didn't see anything on. And the app is specifically, if I type in three, eight, wing, so it pulls up, okay, like the town's schedule. And maybe they dropped it, but it is.
Was it?
Because the blog task has been crashed, I think we're not done. But I'll have to, I'll look that up.
I'll look it up here too.
The contract for, I thought it was five because we did it the first year it started. No, no, I one, where it picked up for year two it was. Okay, it was.
Okay, any more questions? Chad, I'm sorry, council racing.
That's, that's okay. No, nothing, no.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. There actually nobody in the gallery waiting to meet you. Yeah.
Okay, so if I can find it through the. So as I said, one major thing on my report as well as admin is the sticker shop that we got from the one single R F P. So again, this is preliminary and we just threw some numbers together. I, the first thing I did do was reached out to Party Staff List, who is in charge of the I C I P program for the province. And let him know our situation. He assured me unfortunately that every municipality in the last six months has run into this. It's just costs are skyrocketing. And, you know, so it wasn't, he was not surprised by our phone call. So what I requested, and this is just as, so we can have multiple options. Is to de-scope the project with keeping the funding at the level it's at. So we've requested that unofficially. That would be the best case scenario is if we try to pull out what we can in the project that isn't critical, but still keep the 100% of the funding. So that's what we're hoping.
What did we budget for, sorry?
Yeah.
One, two.
Sorry?
Six point two, I think.
And it came in. Well, six point two is what we got the funding for, but that was also a year before. So if, the funding was a year behind already, so we bumped it from there. So I think it was six point four, six point five. I think that goes on there. But anyway, it's substantially different.
You say.
It came in at what? It came in at. Nine point five, basically, yeah.
So this nine, so this nine, four, nine, two is the, is the, like the, we can?
Yes.
Is it odd that we only received one tender?
Yes, yes, and. No, and I asked, that was my first question in the province because, just because we don't like the price, we can't re-tender unless there is a substantial change in the project. Jeff, do you want to talk about the market out there and?
Well, basically, there's so much work right now.
Well, basically, there's so much work right now that I contacted two different companies that said they wanted to bid on it. They just have too much work. They couldn't do it.
It's a big project. Look, I would think it would be a decent.
Like the two other companies I talked to said that it was a good tender, it was a good job, but they just had too much other work on the go that they couldn't, they wouldn't be able to do it.
And also with this tender, the current tender, it's 54, they only guarantee the job can be done within 54 weeks. So there's a long timeline that could potentially be with this project, too. So, yeah, it's just a really scary indication of what's happening out there for construction and for like, like the province said, all municipalities. So anyway, to me, and like I said, this is preliminary because it just happened seven days, a week ago. So that would be the best case. So option one shows this is going ahead. So you see all the red immediately next year, our reserves are down in the red, our debt ratios in the red. And then if we fund by reserves, the job as is, the bid as is, well, it gets even worse. You know, we, we have one less debt ratio in the red and all of our reserves in the red as well as, yeah, some extra operating. I've kind of bolded the box of any of the changes to the budget, which is at the bottom, that those are the FCI's with the budget as it is. Okay, so just to compare, for one, option one, the bolded boxes on the bottom for debt ratio is what's changing with that option. And then funding by reserves, it's pretty much changing everything except for the bottom corner of debt ratio. And so option two, again, these are just preliminary options, is doing Riverside Avenue only. I did this without consultation of Jeff and he said absolutely not, we can't just do Riverside. So just, you know, kind of have a little star there, footnote, because Pleasant Hill is, just it really is also another one that's critical.
Two of the three.
Yeah, so again, these numbers will change because we're just kind of reacting right now and trying to get a plan going forward. So, and then with option two, is the reduction in ICIP funding and just doing Riverside. So that is at the percentage that we got for each road. That's how I'm reducing the ICU IP instead of getting the full pot ICU IP. We're just getting the percentage that they originally allocated to each road. So it'll be less for that.
So it will be the two million? So we're trying to follow the line here.
Okay, so it is, yeah, so six point nine. Where's that? Okay, so, yeah, you can see the difference on option two B. If you look down, the funding line is different. So if you, yeah, look at federal funding, it's two point five and then it goes down to one point eight.
So, I'm sorry, what made it go from two point five to one point eight?
Well, because I'm going, yeah, I wanted the best case, which is the province's, well, it's actually technically the feds. You can have all that ICIP funding. So that's the two point five and the two point one. Okay? And so then if they say no, you know, you're only doing one road and that's X percent of what you originally asked for, that's the percentage of funding we're going to give you. And I have nothing back from the province yet, so when I get the hard best rule from them, I'll have the options to, you know.
But we're also saying, Public Works is suggesting that we can't do it that way.
Well, yeah, again, this was just, we just pulling Riverside. So now there are some things, Jeff, do you want to speak to what potentially we can do?
Well, there's a few things that we can probably, Riverside is not, there's no question. Pleasant Hill, there's no question, but we have curbs on Pleasant Hill. That, stuff like that, we can probably get all the infrastructure replaced and pave the streets. Basically same as it is without curbing it and stuff like that. Because it's really going to be a curve going to nowhere. Same with Lewis Street, but if we have to cut one, I would do that one because that's a street that potentially I might be able to hire a contractor just to replace the line on that street, which is mostly that we have trouble with. It's possibly a storm, too, and that doesn't, like, we can deal with that. We don't have a lot there, but Pleasant Hill's bad. We patched it up so many times, we had to pay it over because of this. It couldn't even, it was terrible. So those two, we'll try to cut the cost back on that. And Riverside, I don't, not a lot on Riverside to be cut. I mean, we, we put in a sidewalk and I, I think we should still try to do that, but that would be really, but the only thing that we could knock off of that.
You receive some extra money, that's where that was going to go, right? It was like two seventy or something.
Yeah, but the sidewalk was almost six hundred thousand.
Oh, really? Oh, I thought that covered it all. Okay.
No, well, when we get quotes, like based on square footage, we thought it was going to be, it calculated to around three hundred.
So if can, so if I might, so can we use that two hundred and seventy thousand somewhere else?
Not on this project. Yeah.
Just tie it to.
Yeah, well, no, there's.
Active load and stuff.
Yeah, and you can only stack so much and, yeah, so we can, we can maximize some gas tax now. Like, pull it out of the reserves, but it essentially goes one property to the other, it doesn't matter. But this one has a requirement of.
We can still use that money if the sidewalk, we still, we still need the sidewalk in the contract.
Yeah, I think one of it was active transportation and accessibility and that's how we're getting the sidewalks done. So we couldn't just apply it to the infrastructure.
But that sidewalk is not going to cost us three hundred thousand seventy?
No, six hundred instead of three is.
Yeah. It's not quite six hundred thousand, which is.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll get all of that detailed as we go through. And I've know, too, is WSP is doing a review of that bid as well because they're the one who gave us the cost estimate, right? And so every year we contact them to ensure that it's viable because they're closer to the market than we are. We bought Joffrey for lack of better term years ago, so they were closer. And we actually bumped it, we put out a contingency of 10% over top of their latest recommendations. So they're going to review it and see, Jeff, what are they specifically looking at?
So basically, they're going to review the pricing that was given to us to see how it compares to pricing that's out there to make sure that they didn't just fire numbers at us.
So we've got a lot of.
Comparable.
So if it isn't comparable, does that allow us to go back to the standard?
I would have.
Like it would be gouged?
I don't know.
I wonder, can we go back to the standard?
I'll have to clarify that with the province. I can't answer that. But I'm going to say my initial reaction would be no.
Right.
Right.
If I could ask to Jeff, what's our timeframe in terms of getting this started this year? What's the latest it could be projecting ahead?
I mean, I was hoping to get it started anyway because I don't want to be into the winter months doing this. But, I mean, with everything going on now, that's going to hold us up a little longer because we're going to have to decide what we're going to do, now we're going to do it, then award it, and until we award it, they could be taking more work on now, I don't know.
Well, plus two.
And they guaranteed, was what, forty, or fifty-seven weeks or fifty?
Yeah, I thought it was fifty-four, but it's fifty-four to fifty-seven. And that bid is only good for sixty days, so, yeah.
Can you say who, who it is that bid on?
Dexter.
Of course. So just, so it's a six hundred thousand for the sidewalk in that nine point four?
Well.
Present in addition to.
It's.
Well, no, actually, I pulled the sidewalk out, but I only pulled.
No, but in there or estimate it was in?
Yes, but I pulled it out because it was a separate thing on the line. So, but I only pulled out two, less than two hundred because when they, I didn't have Jeff help me out, so it was just a little sidewalk thing. There were only two numbers there, so there's probably more components that I missed. So it's two hundred thousand higher essentially for the entire project with the sidewalk. But like I said, Jeff and I are going to sit down next weekend with Erin as well, you know, to discuss the viability of the sidewalk and other options, but yeah.
That's close to the nine point, though.
Yeah. Yeah, for both, we were.
The actual number is still a ten, wasn't it? The actual number was a ten.
Yeah.
Oh, this doesn't.
But, no, because I've got it rebated.
Okay.
But we get rebated on some of it, so.
Never done.
So what's our takeaway? You'll, we'll discuss this again in two weeks and.
Well, yes, yeah, I, the, what, to me, is that it's critical to have a meeting with the department managers next week and what the information is we get back from the province about how much of that funding. Yeah, so we are, it is priority, priority, priority to get this done and we're on a time crunch.
So, sorry, I was just going to ask about the sidewalk. Is there any, if we didn't do the sidewalk, is there, like, are we looking at not doing the sidewalk at all and take that six hundred out?
That's an option. We're going to give you guys all the options.
Okay. Not that it's a great option because it's only six hundred thousand, but.
Yeah, no, we certainly want it, but is it financially viable?
And then that grant, the two seventy, is there another spot we can consider?
Yeah, not on that project, but certainly.
Can we find something else?
Oh, absolutely. There's, Erin knows that it's going to.
You'll do, too. For sure.
Because I wouldn't want to lose that money?
Yeah, we've got it already and we just have to.
Do you serve timeframe on that?
I'm not sure. I'll have to look into it, but it was just a surprise and we kind of got it at the end of the fiscal year, so.
Wow.
Thank you. We're moving to Chief Belvedere.
The reports there, I'll just mention, I, I know we just talked about budgets and things are tight and you have to reevaluate, but it did apply for funding to offset some of our capital budgets towards the community center side. And we've got thirty-five thousand dollars towards that project, so that's exciting. It's not a lot, but it's, it's a fair bit, so, so that helps a little bit. And then just to know, we are at a hundred and fifty kids registered so far for summer programs. So that's really good for summer sports, sorry. And then we have four weeks of our camp full right now for day camp.
Thirty-five thousand dollars, just call thirty-five thousand dollars.
And the bonus, too, about that is that the RFP came in lower than we had budgeted. So there's a double bonus on that one.
Thank you, Erin.
I have one question for the. Do you know when the CBCL report is going to come?
It came into our email box like an hour ago. So we're going to review it and we'll send it out. And then hopefully we'll be able to speak in touch to council about it.
Perfect.
In two weeks, yeah. Hopefully, yes.
Thank you very much. We, we know I have Mr. Cook here for the report. It's pretty, it's a general nature, but it's just over here, the last planning and advisory committee, or chair that. We had, okay. Basically, we brought in Greg in in front of the town board office and talked about, called micro homes, mini homes, whatever. And we had a really engaging discussion on the merits of that. And they're tied into auction frozen foods workforce. That's one they need for, like, need and necessity. There is discussion of land that can be given from the province. When we had a meeting with Mr. Moore here, myself, Dale and a couple other councils that were there, talked about properties that can be given out, but at this point, nothing concrete. And Oxford's fairly unique because they have, they had an issue where they didn't move forward housing. Their town was in the blocks, so the province moved here quickly. And they're being built locally in Pugwash. So it's good to get a look at it. One of the concerns was making sure that you zone properly for it, that you look at the longevity of these homes compared to a different structure. But it could be down the road, certainly an option, given the workforce that we have coming in. People can't afford a four or five hundred thousand dollar home. Look at a mortgage of two hundred thousand or less, and these are a little different. The employer, Auction Frozen Foods, they hold the mortgage for the individual something like these, probably ten years. But they're guaranteed a workforce, but that they actually own the house, which would not be applicable in this situation here. So just another tool to look at is, you know, we're looking at accessibility and, or accessibility, looking at affordability, homes that are on that 30% ratio. So Greg and, and talked to us at some point, I hope he had planning and advisory to take a visit at Oxford and maybe look at the site for the being built, if that's a direction that planning advisory would recommend to go with council. So again, looking outside the box a little bit, to look at what other places are doing it. It was also pretty discussed down in Glasgow, they've done some options, taking hotels and then turning into formal units. We don't have that option here, but we do have land. The province has said, we will give you land in case of, point was where the parking lot was across the highway. And again, that was a verbal, like it's passive, nothing concrete. Basically, that, when they granted this, he felt that this developing, could take a place in Stewartac, but it should be looked at outside of downtown core. And I think that was a general consensus with council, laying here at that table, looking at a very specific area for it.
Setting, not sporadically on land.
It was just a very preliminary discussion, another option to look at. And I thought it was something worth entertaining, so. And we're not going to meet next month, we're going to be convened this month, in June. And more from the site plan of rules and such forward to that time, so.
Just from the spring conference that we were at, the community housing acquisition program, which is built for cooperatives. Have we looked at possibly leveraging, what am I going to call it, the old Stewartac Elementary School property and perhaps partnering with the cooperatives and bringing affordable housing for, as Deputy Mayor Chapman and I have spoken about before, the quote unquote working for? Like, have we even, like, has that been a thought or an exploration? Or maybe talk to Diane Kelderman and see if they're willing to partner with us? We have the land. Is the, if I may, ask Mr. Sibley, is the infrastructure still there on the old school property?
There's just a service side, it seems, a house.
Okay.
Nothing but where council, for something, I've had discussions with the province or Mr. Level in that capacity.
It's just a suggestion.
It's a good suggestion. It's something that I think other municipalities are taking a stronger look at because the larger municipalities are getting the funding, they're getting the resources, putting it very quickly. How do the smaller municipalities and towns get and fill that need? It's a real need.
I saw an article recently about the Nova Scotia Quoque capital lines, more houses in the Truro area, but they're already existing homes, so I don't know if they would actually build them.
Yeah, they will. Diane is a really good friend of mine, and so I have talked to her just about what her project is and doing. My, my son was one of her interns a couple of summers ago. And they are doing amazing things for exactly what Deputy Mayor Chapman and I were talking about.
They'll maybe some units.
In addition to Cody's place, which they're building from doing in other states from the ground up.
I think somebody we have to have a strong look at because, you know, we have growth and we've ran the table two years now. And it's, one of the other things that came across the conference was, was true. It's not our mandate, but it becomes our issue.
Right.
So that's, you know, looking at from both sides, and that was across the board, that council. Thank you. Having a simple look at, on the table, have a strong look at it.
Yeah, I'm certainly willing to help, you know, help you get in touch with Diane.
Absolutely. Any more questions?
Not only, this is what they, not only mandate, but we have to look after people.
That was a good sense of around the province to like mandate that. It's not, maybe no location is too strong a word, but it's certainly, I think it is. If we don't, who will?
You can put the agenda?
That works. I think that's why I'll... I think we'll do public works, to get back to Jeff. Good evening, Jeff.
After this report, then, anybody, any questions or remarks?
I do. First of all, the new lines and crosswalks, awesome, very nice. I had, actually, someone, resident, asked me some questions, and that was about the gravel in front of the apartment building, and some no parking, or trying to control the parking just along here. Anything we can do on those?
So that's part of the reason for the line. This was all in the works before, just with the weather. So, I mean, we painted lines up here, and like, they were barely dry, and the cars were parking on the inside of the lines like yesterday. Honestly, I, so I am gonna stick up, we actually have some no parking signs, I'm gonna put one on the pole, and here we are in front of the office. The lines are there, hopefully people may be using the gravel on the other side. That, I don't know what we're gonna do with that yet. It's an issue we know, but we just don't know what we're gonna do to fix that yet. Let's try to keep clean that as best we can until, till we can get a permanent solution.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Can I ask, what is the issue? Is it, is it going on the road, the traffic on the road?
And I think also, Jeff, on some of the sidewalks going up from the later time, so I guess the guys will, some of the staff at some point will take care of that couple of things about, very minor.
On which?
Just going through Main Street, like, there's some debris left from, usual from where.
So, yeah, well, we are, we've thrown clean at once, but it, it, I don't know where it comes from. But it all comes back. It's some up on Main Street West, a lot of it comes down from heavy rain or whatever in the driveway. It does need, we will have to do it again.
The parking lot in the driveway to the community center is real one.
We need gravel on the parking lot, like, you can't even grade that. We went up to try and...
Now, Sir Osborne.
Wondering if there's any way we can get a crosswalk from here, like, like where the liquor store is, across Main Street West? I know I brought that up a little while ago.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, we should be able to, like, there's no, there's nothing to go to. Like, you know, there's no, there's no, there's no sidewalk on this side. So we'd be taking them to a gravel shoulder, which we can probably do, I'm just not sure of the best way to do that yet. We're just doing that now, we're just into that now, so we'll have a look.
We do have that story.
No, that was, that was in the walkability study, two of them, I think, one by Dairy Queen, and then one up by Gibson Boulevard, or whatever it's called, but I didn't realize that you need something to step on when you go to the other side.
Something else to do it, but there, there is gonna be a problem with Dairy Queen, because there's, there's, there's no, there's no, no sidewalks on either side of the road, and that's where it stops. So, we'll see what we can do with it. I'll get the manual and just see what the rules say that we can and can't do. I, I think we should be able to do something by the, the new development, like by the liquor store and all that stuff, especially with the, if grocery stores go up there.
I think we have the walkability plan posted on the website over here.
I believe, but it's not, we can't.
Yeah, it's got a great idea for there, and we are working towards it.
And then, I'm just, timeframe regarding, a number of residents are concerned, complaining about close to the mayor's house, the intersection there, the little dip.
Highways today, and I can, it's, it's, I don't know, highways right away. So he's meeting me here tomorrow morning, up there.
Okay.
Let's see what we can do.
It's half and half, isn't it?
It's theirs, that they're gonna make us do it. That's what's gonna happen, I already know that. Because every time we wanna do something, we're supposed to call them for permission, but every time we want something done, go ahead. You know, it's...
Because I've just noticed it recently, and I'm sure you have been there, but people are swerving into the complete other side of the road.
And it's a hard, it's a hard intersection for us to maintain, because it's right in the intersection, so. But anyway, I am meeting with Keith Ryan tomorrow morning, nine o'clock.
Jeff, when you're meeting with him, he addressed the trees and such have been down, you know, in the property adjacent to that, that needs to be cleaned up. Trees down, so no one carrying some over. Thank you, sir. Okay, that is the end of public works. I have not heard councillor approve the term on this one, but give it time. So with that, yes, so with that kind of motion to approve, please.
I would move that we receive and accept the report presented.
Second, please.
Oh, wow. Did we lose everyone? Leah, are you there?
Yep, yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, cool, thanks.
We lost you and councillor Ramsey out there at the time. Councillor Ramsey, can you hear us?
He's not in here, he's gone.
14, I left it down, the councillor Ramsey has left.
Thanks, Leah.
No problem.
So we are at the discussion of motion, please. Question is, McCall. All in favor? opposed, so moved. Because kind of meeting last week, we all got a little bit, cookies. Okay, we're going to 9B committees, I'm gonna pass over to councillor Crimlin. I think. Maybe I'm wrong. I see that look over the house, so I'll go back to you.
Yeah, we added committees back in, the approval for the dissolution of committees was tabled at the last council meeting. Committee of the whole had voted to approve to council dissolution of the committees, one, two, three, four, five committees, and so they passed that. Why we brought it back onto the committee of the whole agenda is because councillor Crimlin has suggested that bylaw and, no, business and tourism would like to remain as a committee supported by the town. So I don't know if you want to speak to that, which is why I revised the motion.
We've been, the business and tourism committee have been chatting about the future of that committee, and maybe someday, and originally, we talked of it being sooner, and now they're requesting that it be later, that it continue to be a committee of council. The committee really likes being a part of council and being, being closer tied to council. The fear of them not being committee of council and kind of going out on their own, where it's not a real vibrant solution at the moment, that it may sort of fizzle and die, and that this way, it's on a good path at the moment, and that it would continue that way, and eventually, as this tourism committee, which is, there's a Stuyak Tourism Committee, which is actually a society registered with the Registry of Joint Stock, and they're the committee that oversee the operation of the VIC, Visitor Information Center. That committee is looking to slowly take on more projects, and maybe do some little marketing efforts and things for the business community. When it becomes more robust, that might be the time for this committee to switch over, or maybe never. But for now, business and tourism would love to continue to be a member of council, or committee of council, excuse me.
Now I know I hit the cross pass here, so. So before I look at bringing this to a motion, opened up for discussion, ground at council table. It's open, councillor.
Question, just a couple of questions, actually. CBC did a recent article on police advisory boards, and that they are mandated for all municipal units. Should that not be added, or is that an external?
Yes, external, yeah, this is internal.
Yeah, internal.
Yeah, okay, sorry. And the other question is, I know there's, from when Jason was here, we talked about ad hoc committees that are really not doing anything anymore. So would it be better for us just to kind of chop off those committees instead of dissolving all committees?
Well, we went through the entire list.
Yeah.
We did the review, and so there really are no ad hoc committees that we identified that needed to stay.
Right.
Yeah, so that's why it's easier just dissolve everything, instead of going through each one that we're gonna dissolve.
Burn them up.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
It was just easier than listing all the ones we're getting rid of, because we have 23 plus, yeah. So this is just the shorter, more efficient.
Okay, gotcha.
I think it was, first start, that was 23, I remember Jason turned around going in, that it'll come back in, so. But yes, internal only.
Yeah.
Okay.
With that, can I ask for a vote in this 9B?
That's the extra sheet, like a big sheet.
I so moved that the committee would recommend that council approve the dissolution of all internal committees, with the exception of council, meaning the whole audit, planning and advisory, business and tourism, and bylaw.
Move it, Deputy Mayor Chapman, second, please. Second to councillor Crimlin, discussion of motion. As we call, all in favor? C, and that is tender process of tax sales.
So there are two options for a tax sale as for the MGA, and so I'm requesting that we use, and I think I've attached it there, that we, for this tax sale going up, that we use a tender process instead of a public auction. It's way more cost effective, we don't have to have the announcing equipment and having staff at a location that I would anticipate a lot of people would be at, so we'd have to get printers there to print out the documents and everything that you need to have immediately after the lot is sold. So it would be my recommended, recommendation that we, or my request, that we do that by tender. And we did that last time because of COVID, and it worked quite well.
Do we get, you can put in a minimum bid for this, correct?
And it has to be, for this specific instance, it has to cover tax rates. I think water, I'll have to check, but it might be both utilities and the demolition cost, as well as advertising.
Now, maybe once you add that, it might be worth the way the land actually is worth, but would it make sense to have it appraised first, and have we know roughly what we should start as a minimum bid?
No, with the minimum bid, we're only, we have to only cover our costs, so that's the minimum bid. The minimum bid is any cost that the municipality has incurred, which are taxes, yeah. So after that, they, the, they, that's the lowest they can absolutely bid. Anything above that is the potential.
But can we put the minimum bid as higher than what our costs are?
Yeah.
Or we just, just to cover our costs?
Can we add in any legal costs?
Yeah, sorry, I should have written the list, but yes, yes.
There are certain criteria we can add in.
Yes, there's a list of what you can take back from the proceeds of this.
Can you give a estimate of what that would be?
The proceed? Yeah, I had it, I should have really done. Yeah, well, I think it was, I'm gonna say 20-something. Yeah, the demolition, I think. Yeah, it was relatively expensive.
Okay, well done.
So, I know we talked about this at the last meeting, the combined meeting, so we can't do it by real estate agents?
The MGA says two options. Auction, tender.
Just being a lot, just, a lot was just posted, actually, on Kitchener Street, for 79.
But we can't get... Well, it's not, it's like, the extra money is in the interest of the resident, so, I mean, that would be nice to have, but we don't have the luxury.
That has to last for 25 years or something.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Any more questions or comments? Thank you. For you, okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll see that, I'm awesome, well, that point, so it's a tender process for tax sale.
I'll make that motion, that the committee of whole recommends to council that they approve a call for tenders for the property for the upcoming 2023 tax sale, in accordance with the MGA, section 141.2.
Go to councillor Osborne, second, please. Second by councillor Crimlin, discussion of the motion.
My question.
Question as we call, all in favor? Opposed, so moved. D, we're going back to our people's side?
Yes, so my recommendation is that we table that until we have some options, and we know what, what they are.
As per previous step. E, number of you, public engagement discussion.
Okay, so as we know before, so I think it was November, December, council voted to reduce the number of councillors from seven to five, and an application, or not an application, the document was sent into the NSUARB, and just shortly before we had the public event with them, they notified us that we were missing the pub, public engagement portion of that application. So we were missing that report in our original submission, so we have asked for a, an extension, which is only until the end of May, but we can go back and ask for another extension to get the public engagement portion of that done.
The other, the option to go back and ask?
Yeah, we go back to the public and just engage them and have opinion and discussion around the...
I...
...councillors.
I know, I actually, it was funny that I just had a conversation with a gentleman, fairly well-known gentleman from, from town, and he expressed his, he, he said he really should have been at the meetings, he really thought it was a really big mistake that, so. And he was wondering why the, there wasn't a vote there for the, for the town to come in and, and give some input on it, so. Maybe it was, but I, I don't know, he missed it, obviously, so.
We, we did already vote on...
Yes.
So, what if the public engagement changes or not?
Well, that's a good question. I, I don't know the technicalities, so I might have to ask that, but my assumption would be that you have, I don't know if you can repeal approval, so I'd have to look into that.
So if the public engagement...
I think it's a fair question to ask, but I...
That is a great question.
Well, the NSUARB can't make a call on it until public engagement takes place. And if we don't have a public engagement, then we're back to seven counts.
So, and I'm wondering if that just really puts us back to square one, because we didn't do step one. Yes, so I think, I, I guess I'll confirm with NSUARB if that, if we're back to step one and have to do the council process of voting after public engagement again.
And that's, what if they grant us a number of extensions as well?
Yes.
And is there not a deadline to have this done?
There was a deadline that was passed, so we asked for an extension after they gave us the notice that we were missing some documentation. So that extension is till the end of May, so we just have to communicate with them, and if they don't give us an extension, then I believe the application will be rejected, because it's not complete.
But if, so if we're back to step one, I guess my question was, is there not a deadline for the UARB to make a decision prior to the election of 2024?
I don't know. I'd have to check with them, and that's what they would, I'm sure, would be kind of the details they would give me if we asked for an extension, is that they can't.
This is an eight-year process, every year?
Ten.
Okay, so there's like the process between...
They'll bring the details forward for that. I guess that was really just more for discussion and information.
Your back, counsel.
Yep. Yep.
I see it.
Lead counsel. It's not noted. Eighty-eight. Okay. We're up. We have a motion for us, paperwork, and that's a lottery board sponsorship. So again, before we go to a motion or whatever, we'll, I'll ask for a discussion of that, please.
We have a policy that states that we can't.
Sponsorship or is it, um, donation?
Sponsorship policy is the name of it.
Okay.
And, um.
It does say donation.
The policy.
If it was one of our assets, if it was a capital asset, like it was down the ball field or something, something we wanted to put a sign up, they could pay us, you know, when they have a contract.
Sure.
sponsoring, yeah, refreshments.
Oh, sorry. How, how do we do saltscapes like that?
That was like a marketing project through business and tourism.
Unless I'm seeing something different, our hands are really tied in this situation to go back unfortunately and say no.
I'm just gonna make one comment and just that it is, um, there is some advertising that is involved with that.
Of this?
Yeah. Right, each level of sponsorship, you get certain advertising.
So can we look at that from that lens?
I just not go back to the saltscapes, if it was from the marketing budget and whatnot. That's how we got around it.
Was never a question of getting around it. It was an advertising opportunity to market the town.
Yeah.
So we, well.
Yeah.
We bought ads in the Stuyak River Music Festivals on behalf of the Business and Tourism Committee, we bought an ad.
Yeah.
To promote the town.
So did we take it from, from this and tourism?
Budget?
Yep.
So if you looked at it as a marketing piece, as an advertising piece.
Would it have to come from the budget, from the business?
Budget?
Budget, there's development promotion budget.
Is it, could we not?
Yes, we could. Uh, it is. Yeah, there is, I think there's only a couple of things that are specific to it, but there is room for additional.
Is there, is there a ceiling on that in terms like they're asking five thousand in terms of the sponsorship?
No ceiling.
That's good. With increasingly.
My understanding when I first read it was as a sponsorship or donation and I mean, if you look at it, if it's a way to promote the town, then that's a different.
It really is, yeah.
Thing. That was not my initial interpretation.
I think we have done it, uh, though in other publications, maybe. Uh, I'm, I'm thinking of, um, Chamber of Commerce, we do stuff there, like, um.
Yeah, so sure. Whatever it's called, it shouldn't help it. Community Bolton.
Yeah.
Just playing the devil's advocate, though.
Yep.
Is it the same as like sponsoring Mitchell on his hockey team because he gets to Stuyak as a name bar on the back of his jersey? Yeah, like it, it's kind of a slippery slope as to what is considered a sponsorship versus what's considered
The worst.
Promotional, you know?
Yeah.
I'm disagreeing. That would be my, I mean, I don't.
I'm looking for consensus. I would love to see it, but.
Well, I'm partial to the library. And I think it'd be great if we could, give them a thousand dollars as they requested for, um, you know, if we're getting something back in return, like the logo and the bird and the, I just like live to the dog and the lion and signage at all business. If we're getting something in return and just not.
Just giving it.
Giving it up for the.
But this is what I'm saying, you do with Mitchell's hockey team. You get your logo on banner, you get a name bar on the back of the jersey. Essentially the same. And nothing against the library, so I, I give a lot to the library. It's just I don't wanna open the can of worms or the slippery slope of, well, you did it for this.
Do you have not consensus because you want to do your motion on top, totally open to what the feeling is or is it a non-issue?
I think we can do it. Not that I wouldn't love to do it.
Quite appropriate, but you certainly take it to a motion and.
Is there any way to go back and ask for it to be brought forward different or is that just really stepping over the line? It would be if we did that, so I think it was on the heads, my word to say, but, uh, I'm, I'm struggling to, I want to support it. I, trust me, it's just looking at.
It'd be great here, Town Studio, you know?
I went to the other mist house, really.
Yes.
The same.
Yeah. East Hans and the rural Colchester.
But those ones, uh, some municipalities, um, have policies to donate.
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
Yeah. So we kind of tag our cats.
That says no.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I remember when we brought them in, what we brought them in. And we were getting inundated with requests and we just didn't have, we didn't have the money. We just didn't.
Counselors could all keep part of their time.
Sure.
I would.
I already donate to the library.
Every day.
Seriously, I donate cash to the library over here, so.
I'm just trying to, ways to, to do it, but.
I don't, I donate mine to the Leach in a roundabout way.
And that's, that's duly noted there, counselor.
I think I'll start donating to the Leach.
In a roundabout way? Okay, so.
It's unfortunate, but I don't think we can.
Okay, so that's just no.
Unfortunately.
No, my.
Good, great discussion, fair, fair discussion, so, like that. Okay, I believe we're down to bylaw policies. Can this one?
This is nine G there.
I knew it, I knew it.
Well, I think.
It's all typed in one way.
I'm assuming nine F and G are.
Same, yeah, let's read that way, but that's a minute's work, yeah. For the Colchester reasons, public library, four minutes. Okay, trial code here, so bylaw policy, nothing at this point, or nothing here yet. Again, uh, Leah, I don't see anything on citizen comments.
No, there's nobody in the gallery.
Thank you, Leah.
No problem.
With that, I'll move into my report, um, for May, May eleventh. May first, H R meeting, May second, chair of special counsel meeting. May third, attended a women in business breakfast sponsored by the Chorl, Colchester, Chamber of Commerce, intro. May third, H R meeting with, uh, Patrick Harding recruiting. May third to fourth, uh, with Councilor Osborne, attended the N S F M spring conference in Bigby. And I provided, provided, uh, council final overview of my report, uh, this morning. Thank you, counsel. May ninth, H R committee meeting with Mr. Bobble and, you know, recruiter Patrick Harding of S P L Human Capital Resources. And exit interview was conducted with Mr. Bobble at that time. May tenth, uh, yesterday morning, I had a, a meeting, uh, with the executive of the Stuyak Fire Department and that was a follow-up to a presentation to council and they're gonna bring forward some ideas going forward in terms of what they discussed at the council meeting. Uh, May tenth, I met with, I met with our, I think Deputy Mayor, Miss.
Deputy Mayor.
C A O. Long day, spooky. We met, uh, we agreed to meet each Wednesday morning, go forward. And, and that will be, at least especially the, the weeks between and with the interim situation and I'll bring forward to council anything that might be relevant that will come to the council table at that point, uh, each week. So give us a chance to set and, if we're banking, maybe everything's out at one time, so, thank you. May eleventh, um, just before a meeting tonight, myself and the H R committee met with, uh, Patrick again and had a very productive meeting. And that's the end of my report. I will now go to counselors, starting with Deputy Mayor Chapman, please.
I attended an H R committee meeting, uh, special counsel meeting, met with, um, Pat, Patrick Harding of S P L Human Resources. Uh, business and tourism meeting, attended an H R, uh, meeting with S P L again, I attended the tender opening, um, met with, uh, Patrick Harding again, and I just wanted to thank Counselor Osborne and Mayor Lloyd for your reports from the N S F M and your re-education.
Deputy Mayor, Counselor Osborne.
Um, attended the women's business, uh, breakfast meeting as well. And I have distributed my V I C's report on the N S F M to all council, uh, today. If you want, just let me know. Um, met with several residents regarding several different topics, everything from garbage to taxes to roadies. Um, and then I'm just looking forward to the market on Saturday at the Big River Cafe. Hopefully the thing holds off.
Didn't notice. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, what's your link?
Nothing.
Counselor Crumlin.
Did you hear?
I know that early.
In addition to the community's, oh yes, that I've attended, that's already been mentioned. Um, I just wanted to remind everybody, uh, June second is United Way Day of Caring and we're having an event here in Stuyak, sponsored by Mastodon Ridge. And up at Mastodon Ridge at ten o'clock, June second, is, uh, music and coffee and treats. And, um, hopefully C T C out busting for those that can't make it. Aaron's been working on that. So anybody that wants to come, you're all welcome. And I also just wanted to thank our staff, um, for rising up to the challenges that we're being faced with and, uh, I think we're getting off to a good start and I just wanna thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Ramsey.
Uh, nothing, just, uh, like to commend, uh, Jeff and the boys for downtown. Uh, a lot of, a lot of hard work's been going on down there lately and, uh, it's, uh, being hard, right in the center of town in the public eye and no, nobody leaning on shovels and, uh, it, it, it looks great and it's good, good to see.
Thank you, Counselor, and I, I approached to Mr. Sibley and said, take some pictures and he asked me to wait till it's finished, so I've got some in between, no shovels, no handles.
Yeah.
Great job. Thank you. There's no in-camera session. If our notice of motion in reconsideration. Are you done? Eight thirty-one, we are finished. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Did you send your report? Oh, it should be. Oh, sorry, I don't have jackets. Yeah, no. Sweet dangerous, let's do it. Sorry.
Let's do nothing wrong, watch.
Hurry up for bed.
I have a preacher.
So.